Please signify by saying aye.
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 Peter, you are the chair.
Yep. Second item on that, I bet.
Say aye.
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 Just to elect the vice chair, so entertain the motion or nomination.
I'd like to nominate Susan Yan.
Any other nominations? Who has been nominated? Any other nominations? Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to elect Sue as vice chair. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Aye.
Elect a clerk. Let's say name probably and only unless you end up having to sign the minutes. Anybody want to nominate somebody?
I move that we nominate Elijah. I think it's Elijah. I'm assuming. I can't see who. I'm assuming the same people won. I can't see.
I'm here.
Yeah, we're here.
Elijah's here.
I'll second that.
Any further nominations? Hearing none, motion is made to elect Elijah Zimmer as a clerk for the works. It is consecutive, so. All those in favor would say aye.
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 And opposed, say nay. Elijah is duly elected. Appointments. They appointed tree warden. Here a nomination.
I nominate Cass Wright.
I second that nomination.
Cass Wright has been nominated and seconded. Mr. Wright, you have any comments you'd like to make? No? I'd like to continue with the privilege. All right. Motion made and seconded to elect, to appoint Cass Wright as the tree warden. All those in favor would say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Aye. Then you need to appoint an animal control officer. Do I have a nomination?
I would like to nominate Cass Wright as our animal control officer.
I'll second that.
The other nominations. Hearing none, the motion has been made and seconded to appoint Cass Wright as the animal control officer. All those in favor would say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All opposed, nay. And finally, before we get up to the beginning of the meeting, is to appoint a select one member to review and sign warrants. Do I give a nomination?
I nominate Peter Golick.
Second that.
Any other further nominations? Hearing none, the motion has been made and seconded to appoint Peter Golick as a select one member to review and sign warrants. All those in favor would say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All opposed, nay. I'll do these down so we can actually conduct the meeting. I will officially call this meeting to order. Is there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting?
No additions for tonight.
Nothing. I have nothing myself. And the next on our business is to approve the minutes of February 15th. If they're in your packet, I hope everyone's had a chance to circle through them. Lot of reading there. Lot of discussion. Paying the motion to accept.
I move to accept the minutes of February 15th.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of February 15th. Are there any dilutions, corrections, additions, or omissions to be noted? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor to approve the minutes would say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All opposed, nay. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Three minutes per person. Oh, we have a victim here.
I'm Delcie Taylor. This is my first meeting, so we don't have to be, we're not really a first meeting.
Yeah.
Can you hear us?
I can barely hear.
Do I have a chance to speak now? Right now?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
This is a strange looking creature. I should pick up your voice so the closer you are, the more.
Yeah, yeah, just speak up.
The better it can actually.
Let us know what you need it for the record.
I appreciate it. Thank you guys for letting me speak today. I'm Delcie Taylor, and I'm just basically just letting you know that I'm representing the customer experience for downtown. And we just want, like, we're trying to work on some better standards for some, I guess, this one. And there's been a lot of, let's see, reactivity downtown. I just want to keep it really brief because we can, we can address this again at a future time. And I was hoping to get maybe some, some guidance as soon as we move forward because I think I've done and spoken and addressed this with probably more than a dozen people downtown. So what it's in regards to is just providing a better experience and maybe some better communication between the business owners and customers downtown.
I do represent a group, but.
Well, I'm proposing that I start a support group for victims of business owners downtown. And of course, a lot of people will not know what I'm talking about, but those of you who have that experience with a certain, I don't know how to say in general, but there might be a certain characters downtown that probably haven't been operating a business up to the standards that we've got for our community. In that we're known as being a friendly town. And so I would like to start a, maybe a support group where people can go anonymous and just voice their opinion or their experience of what's happened to them downtown, and it's going to be called the Empress and Clothes because it's going to be addressing a lot of issues that have been kind of hidden from the public eye and the public. So that's it. I don't want to take up too much of your time, and I just am so grateful today. Does anyone have any questions? Yes.
How will, how will the chair?
It's going to be a forum, and it's just going to be a forum online, probably on Facebook. And it's only to open up just the lines of communication so we can let customers or perhaps just anybody downtown who's had any experience that's that's less than perfect, and what we want is like maybe like a five-star customer service rating for downtown. It's just such a wonderful place, and it's just a gem for the whole country. We, this is so rare that there's a place with so many historic buildings and just such a close network of people. And we want to, we just want to, you know, keep that as personal as possible. That's all. Nothing really more. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Just been handed the version of the tally of the vote. If you want to hear it, we can do a condensed version. As you can see, who's been elected here tonight. Talking greetings, like dark side of the glass, so I don't want to be all sad. It's so big. So proud. Okay. Total of 477 votes. That's the vote for the town moderator. There were 477 votes for Raymond Suko, so Raymond Suko is elected. Town clerk, Ethel Nehot, 478. Ethel is duly elected. Select board. Three-year seat, Peter Golick, 410 votes. He's all elected. Select board for the one-year term. Britt Cowan, 347. Will Crowder, 46. Stefan Golick, 150. Elijah Zimmer, 360. That puts Britt Cowan and Elijah Zimmer in their seats. Town treasurer, Ethel Nehot, 465. Ethel is duly elected. Town lister. Public stack, 440. Running out of votes. Town lister for two years, that was a three-year seat. Two-year seat is Ed Beetrick. Hope that's correct. 396 votes. But Ed Beetrick is elected, listed for two years. Public funds and trustees, Deborah Wright, 298. Deborah Wright, running out of votes. Campbell Fund trustee. Another on a post seat, Deborah Wright, 292. Campbell custodian. There was no one running for that, and there were no write-ins.
I know my name. I know my name.
Well, it's not shown here. Go.
Yeah, the.
The write-in will probably have.
The write-ins will be tall there. This is what the.
Right.
Validity.
Okay. Public library trustee, Harold Blackwood, 348. Ryan Coine, 345. Margot Gia, 484. Uh, 404, excuse me. Those were the only ones that are running. School moderator, Raymond Suko, 465 votes. Again, out of both. School director, three years. Tarkivi, 314. Priscilla Lambert, 153. Tarkivi is elected. School director, two years. Priscilla Lambert, 161. Write-in, 112. Here's it. Priscilla, I know there was one write-in. Britt Colway, I believe, was a. Yep. So Priscilla elected to the two-year seat. School director for two-year seat. Anthony Golick, 340. There were 24 write-ins. I don't believe there was a write-in for that seat. School director, one year. Bill Morse, 358 votes. He was running out of votes. Also, high school director. Margot Gia, 410 votes. Priscilla Lambert, 240. Here's the Margot Gia as the winner. Town Article III is housekeeping. Motion that are article to authorize the select board to, and trigger to borrow money, etc. Vote is yes, 461. No, 430, 43. Article IV. The town authorized the select board to seek out, the housekeeping motion, article, seek out funds. Yes, 475. No, 29. On Article V, cannabis article. Yes, 310, 318, excuse me. No, 187. You are opted in. Article VI. Budget article. Yes, 435. No, 71. Have a budget. Town Article number eight. Excuse me, seven. Let's go to seven. That's the service article, services agencies. Yes, 428. No, 90. Article H. It's the library article. Yes, 398. No, 126. Article IX. This is the railroad article. Yes, 435. No, 92. Yes, we bought a railroad station. We won't know that until July, but. Tentatively, yes. Article X, that is the wild drive article. Yes, 385. No, 122. That's what to stick up and order drunk. Article XII. That is the meeting house reserve account fund appropriation. Yes, 391. No, 118. Yes, they get their money. Town Article XIII. This is. Okay, Article XII. Article XII is the budget by Australian ballot for the town, for the public library. Yes, 391. No, 118. Article XIII, it's down at Australian ballot vote. Yes, 378. No, 124. I'm going to have to sit down. I don't understand what it is. School Article number two. I think that's a budget vote. Rockingham. Yes, 414. No, 102. School Article V. That's a high school one. Yes, article, yes, votes, 459. No, 57. School Article IV. Five, six, seven, eight. Nine, I think, all are for use of $350,000 to be reducing the taxes. They all passed by at least 100 votes, if not more. I think, so there are some other articles here, but they, they don't have a, I feel what they are, so just major thing that here's everything that passed that falls, so. Everybody's got their work cut out for them. Okay, let's go back to that. Warning, open agenda. Item number two, one we've already completed. Number two is to set time and place of regular board meetings. First and third Tuesdays at 6:00 P.M. Oops, there was a motion here.
I'll bring one.
It's there.
Yep.
So. Entertain the motion to appoint. Well, I want to make motion to set the time and place of regular board meetings.
Sure, I, I move that, uh, regular board meetings for the coming year, you know, on the first and third Tuesdays of.
It's.
At 6:00 P.M.
Motion made and seconded to set the time and place of regular board meetings as the first and third Tuesdays, back to the old schedule, folks, at 6:00 P.M. Any discussion? Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Number three, select the official newspaper of record and alternate newspaper of record. We only have some special, uh, proposals for the shopper, if you get a packet. We sent them up to the, don't we send them up to four of my, I think, was it, used to be the shopper, the reformer, and Beagle. I think the message used to be, for the comments or. So.
Don't have an alternate.
Well.
You can just designate one, as long as you have a primary, that's the.
So we have a primary one at that vote, I would assume, offer, but someone will have to take a motion for that.
I move that we appoint the shopper.
Recording in progress. Recording in progress.
I move that we appoint the shopper news as our official newspaper of record.
Question is that, do we bid these out? How do you know what the fees are for different papers? They change them periodically, and it just depends on, on their particular circulation that they're charging per promention. So, and they don't all anticipate, so. This is pretty much in line with normal. At some point, I would assume they'll allow us to do it online, but still, until the state changes and makes it all electronic, we still have to have a public, you know, a written publication of some sort.
Right.
So. I think it's a bill for the legislature to. It comes up periodically, and it doesn't seem to ever quite, it'll just finish on, so, yeah, I would assume at some point it will. I didn't feel the shopper had the close connection to our community.
It lasts about.
Yeah, they, they nail it, and the other one, if you have to subscribe to, you know.
From a circulation standpoint, it's probably.
You get the whole thing.
Right.
Yep.
All right.
So. You second.
You get, I second.
I don't.
I do, I second it now.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to select the official newspaper of record as the shopper, and what are we going to do with the alternate? Want to put the reformer on there?
Yeah, what about the Collins?
Yeah, we haven't used alternate for a while, but we should certainly have something, but.
Well, the Collins is free, it is.
Yeah. And it is, well, they, they don't mail them off, but they're just.
No, but they're all over the place.
Yeah, but Susan's at all, all on E, she covers us, which is a.
Not bad.
I'm not going to do that, like.
Our friends in the press.
Why don't we settle on just the official newspaper and go with the shopper?
I bet.
So. Motion made and seconded to appoint the official newspaper of record as the shopper. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Number four, policies and procedures. Do this all in one, present, read everyone, and vote on everyone.
I did not distribute extra copies. I know you guys received them in the past. If you'd like updates, I'll certainly, should have been back to you if you need them, but nothing has been updated since you received it.
I move that we adopt the current policies and procedures that we have been following for the previous year.
Okay, second that. The policies we're going to adopt, it's going to be a conflict of interest policy, code of ethics policy, and rules of procedure. Everyone have that in mind? The made and seconded policies and procedures. All those in favor would say aye.
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 Nay. Motion carries. Number five, review the draft 2021 audit.
Thank you, Peter.
Someone here, or?
Brittany Gilman is on Zoom from RTR Smith. She's.
There she is.
Been working with our finance office, and so we, we had a draft. It was distributed. We had copies that were available for quotes. An informational meeting. Background, and I know that we've had a lot of extra work that we did going back with some of the issues that we're carrying over from prior years and trying to establish updated and corrected balances so that it would be reflective in the 2021 audit. It did take a little bit more time, a little bit more energy. I appreciate the efforts of the folks, both in our finance department and from the auditors, to work through a whole host of issues that were very time-consuming, but I think very important, so. With that in mind, I think Brittany will, uh, do you need me to give you control, or you just want to do a report over the Zoom?
Yeah, I think I can just talk, and I'll reference some page numbers. I find that if I try to share my screen and scroll through the audit, people will get a little seasick. But if there's anything that I need to bring up, I, we can, we can address that later on. So thank you for having me. As Scott said, my name's Brittany. I'm the lead audit manager for the town of Rockingham for FY21. And what we're going over tonight is the report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. And I'm not sure if you have the report in electronic format or in paper or both, but I'm going to be referencing some page numbers. And when I do that, the page numbers that I'm referring to are at the bottom of the page in the audit. So it's not necessarily the page in the PDF. So what I'll try to do is just kind of go over some high points and then happy to take questions afterward. If there's something I can't answer on the spot, then I can research it and give Scott the answer, and he can get back to you. So, excuse me, I know everyone's very disappointed to learn that I'm not going to read the audit word for word. But I'll just try to kind of give you the parts that I have found in my experience that boards find most useful. So I'm starting pages one through three. This is the independent auditor's report. And in, in this report, we outline management versus auditor responsibility. And the most important part is on page two. It's the opinion paragraph. Just one little paragraph, but it's the most important thing. And it says that in our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. So I often say that that doesn't sound super exciting, but it's absolutely the best opinion that you can get. So that's positive. The next place I'll direct you are pages four through 11. This is the management discussion and analysis, and I often recommend that if you are not able or don't have time to sort of read the full audit, that you at least read this. It's a great summary of the audit. It's also a good reference place, so if you're thinking, you know, next week, or you can't fall asleep at night, and you're thinking, what did she say about that? You might be able to find it in the management discussion and analysis more quickly than in the full audit report. I'm not going to review it because I am actually going to view the, review the whole audit report with you, but it's a really good summary. So the first financial statement in this report that I'd like to direct you to is on page 16. And this is called Statement C. It's the balance sheet of governmental funds. And governmental funds are, you know, your sort of day-to-day operating funds. They are sort of the main source of revenue for the government. And as opposed to a proprietary fund, which is a business-type fund that is supposed to be self-sustaining, and actually you don't have any of those this year. You only have governmental and fiduciary funds. And governmental funds focus on near-term assets and liabilities. So we don't present things like capital assets and long-term debt on the face of the balance sheet. Obviously, there you know, note disclosures and other financial statements that we do disclose those things, but that's not the focus of the balance sheet. And the order of the balance sheet are things that are most liquid to least liquid. What that means is things that are most like cash are at the top, and least like cash are at the bottom. And really sort of the focus, and what everyone wants to know is. And really sort of the focus and what everyone wants to know is about your fund balances. And there are five types of fund balance. You can see those at the bottom. And those are non spendable, which are items like inventory and prepaid. There's restricted fund balance, which is usually restricted by an external source such as a grant agreement. And then there are committed and assigned fund balances. Excuse me, which are committed and assigned by boards or voters typically. And then there's unassigned, which is exactly how it sounds. That means it's available for use. So you can see towards the bottom, your general fund fund balance was an increase. And. It's eight hundred and eighty six thousand dollars approximately, almost eight hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. With a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that, I believe that's assigned to subsequent year tax relief already. And the committed funds are related to tree growth, I think, and there's a note disclosure later on, I'll point that out. And the other funds that we have listed are what we call major funds, so there are certain criteria or threshold that a fund has to meet. To be presented by itself on the balance sheet, and then if it doesn't meet that. It gets rolled into that second to last column, there are other governmental funds. But we do have some schedules in the back that show you sort of the breakout of what those funds are, so we'll talk about that a little bit later on. But you can see, you know, obviously in your development fund, your fund balances are restricted only for a specific purpose. So typically, it in your other funds that are non general fund, most of your fund balances are going to be. You know, restricted or committed or assigned spoken for in some way because they have a particular purpose. Next, on page eighteen, so we're just skipping one page. This is Statement E. It's your revenues and expenditures. So it probably looks similar to an income statement that you might see on quarterly reporting or monthly reporting. Might be a little bit more summarized. You can see towards the bottom for the general fund, your net change and fund balance. And as I said, obviously, that's an increase, a hundred and ninety two thousand dollars for the general fund. And so that's all positive. Staying pretty consistent. And then skipping another page to Statement G, that's page twenty, these are fiduciary funds. This is like your private pension plan. These are held in trust for special purposes, so just sort of noting that that's there and you can see that activity. And then the notes to the financial statements actually start on page twenty two. Note one is the typically the longest note aside from the pension note. And that's really kind of a summary of all the other notes. We disclose any significant accounting policies, procedures. There are some COVID nineteen note disclosures that are required in there, so we talk about, you know, the state of emergency, you should buy the governor and. You know, that future grant funds may be received, things like that. There's, you know, a note about, the notes sort of follow the same order as the balance sheet, so most liquid to least liquid. So there are notes about your deposits and investments, you know, your due to, due from accounts. But one note that I do like to point out to boards because it is informative is note eight. Which actually spans a couple pages. It's pages thirty eight to forty and it's your long term debt. And I just find that. It's a nice summary of all your long term debt. It has information about each loan or note or bond, it has the terms. When it matures and there's a nice little summary schedule and I think that that can be helpful and informative in making, you know, future financial decisions and. Sometimes you don't get to see that all in one place, especially if the debt is sort of accounted for in different departments or different funds, things like that. So I think that's something helpful. And then on page sixteen is schedule one, that's your budgetary comparison schedule. So again, this is. Going to look probably similar, maybe a little bit more summarized than than you would usually see, but it. Kind of looks similar to what you would expect a budget to actual to look like. You can see that your revenue came in higher than budgeted, so that's great. That was largely due to highway aid. And then your expenditures were a little bit more than budgeted, although it wasn't quite as much variance as the revenue, and that was due to a variety of factors. You can. See the main sort of departments or areas that there were overages and general government solid waste and public safety. But your revenues exceeded your expenditures pretty significantly, which is what allowed you to continue to add to your fund balance. And then this schedule on page sixty nine through seventy one is broken out into greater detail, so it's a schedule of departmental operations, so you can. Kind of get a little bit more into the budget to actual and see what was going on there. And then, excuse me, pages seventy five to eighty one are those breakouts of the schedules that I referenced. So those are your non major capital and special revenue funds. These are the things that are rolled into those other governmental funds, so you can see what's going on there. There is a deficit in the equipment fund. It looks like the transfers in were not great enough to cover the expenditures this year. I think it was about thirty thousand dollars. So that's, but that's the only place that there's any deficit and sometimes that's a timing thing, just when bills were paid versus when transfers were made. But that's something that you want to look at, make sure that you sort of have a plan for. And then, you know, there are some additional schedules. That you can look at. Most of the remainder of the notes and the schedules are related to pension. That's good bedtime reading. There's a lot of actuarial stuff in there, but the last couple of pages is our report on internal controls. And we say that we didn't find anything significant enough to modify our opinion here, so we're not. We're not changing our opinion on the financial, on the financial statements. Nothing that rises to a level of a material weakness. But in the management letter, we do talk about some things that we found that are either not best practice or they're not. In compliance with what you have said your policies and procedures are, or their opportunities for improvement. So, you know, Cynthia, excuse me, Cynthia and Alyssa. Towards the end really did a good job of getting the financial statements in a place as of year end where, you know, they were fairly stated. So they did a lot of reconciliation, a lot of work to get ready for us. So our comments are mostly geared toward the way that things operated throughout the year. So for example, you know, your bank reconciliations were done by the time we came in, obviously, but they weren't done throughout the year, so there's some things like that. Many of the things we found were repeat comments, things that we had found in prior years. And one example is outdated checks, so there was just a lot of stale checks on the bank reconciliation, checks that. Were cut but never cashed, that were, you know, older than six months from the date of issuance, so just, you know, recommending cleaning those up. As I said, bank reconciliations, some weren't completed in a timely manner, so. We recommend that bank reconciliations are completed and reviewed within thirty days of the bank statement date, and I I'm sure that Scott can attest that. Most, if not all of these things are already sort of in place now with with a new, with Alyssa coming on board. We did obviously. Find, this won't be a surprise to you, but the issues with the income tax withholdings. So the town needing to amend W two's nine forty ones and annual returns for state and federal income tax due to the way that. Taxable wages were handled for some employees in the payroll system. It was during calendar year twenty twenty. But that's, that's been corrected. And then we just found that some balance sheet accounts like payroll liabilities weren't reconciled throughout the year. Again, they were reconciled for year end, but they really need to be looked at on a monthly basis. And I think. Think that's it. On the management letter, so had a lot of great conversations with Cynthia and with Alyssa. Found all the staff to be. You know, responsive and helpful and, you know, kind of willing to work together, so. I think that there was a lot of progress made during the audit and it seems that there's been a lot of progress made in the office, so. There will be an opportunity in the final version for management to respond to the management letter comments, so there will be an opportunity for you to. Kind of memorial memorialize the progress that you've made already and sort of what you have in place. Scott, I don't know if you had any other comments that you wanted to add.
Your only other, for going forward for the ARPA funds, do you have any? General comments for the board because we've been segregating those and how you see the audit handling those as we go forward? Because I know those funds are are not included in this reporting period, so that's going to be something that'll be a major point.
Yeah.
Current budget.
Yeah, so you're required to keep those funds in a separate fund on your financial statements. So what's going to be important is just, you know, tracking those funds and treating them like you would treat other federal funds. So looking at, you know, the compliance that comes with that, making sure that you're performing procurement, making sure that you're keeping documentation. That's going to be, you know, actually schools sort of had this with the C R F funds, the COVID funds. You know, getting millions of dollars and it was just like really overwhelming because it all came at once. You have a little more time with the ARPA funds, but just sort of making sure that you're keeping up to date with what the compliance is related to it and keeping really good documentation.
Yes, so Brittany, Rick Count here, select word number, thank you for your report. We, Scott and Alyssa and I have been corresponding with delinquent taxes. As you know, we have had a delinquent tax sale in five years, which is extraordinarily long period not to do that. And at last report, I heard we had nearly half million dollars in delinquent taxes. I'd like to, if you put that in reference to other towns you work with, and then where does it appear? I was looking for it in the report and I didn't find the where it's reflected.
Yeah, so your delinquent taxes are still recorded as a receivable. So if we look on Statement C, which is on page sixteen. You can see under the general fund, it's about halfway through the assets, it's accounts receivable and then taxes. So it's five hundred and ninety one thousand dollars as of June thirty, twenty twenty one. I really see it all over the map, I have to tell you. I mean, I have some towns that are are very quick to lean and go to tax sale. And when they do, it kind of defers folks from being late as often. But I don't know that I can speak off the cuff as to like about. Towns your size versus the amount of receivables. That's something I can look into. But I I see it all over the map. I see people very low, very high, and then. You know, as I said, folks that are quicker to to go to tax sale are more likely to have lower amounts of delinquent taxes in my experience.
Thank you, and we'll. We cannot count those as revenues until we actually collect them.
Actually, they're so because of the, because we're in a modified accrual basis. When you recognize the tax commitment, it was counted in revenue for that year. The year that it was, so in F Y eighteen, you know, if you had two million dollars was your tax commitment, you would book two million dollars in tax revenue. And two million dollars in receivables, and then as those funds are received throughout the year, your receivable balance goes down. So it's not going to help your revenue if you receive those taxes, except, you know, if you're getting like interest and penalties that you haven't booked as a receivable. But it's just going to go against that receivable. It's not going to help your revenue.
And if we don't collect those taxes, where where's where's that track?
If you decide to that they're uncollectible, then we would like write off that balance. And then that would probably be like a direct entry to your fund balance. It would decrease your fund balance.
And how many years do you generally wait before deeming something uncollectible?
Yeah, I mean, I typically, as of late, like I don't see a lot of people carrying taxes beyond like. Two thousand eighteen, you know, and usually the balances that are that old are very small. They're like a very small holdout, so. You had, you know, a a thousand dollars in like an allowance account for uncollectible that was reducing your taxes receivable, but it wasn't really. Based in any like experience, so you know, what you might want to do is sort of look at what has been uncollectible in the past, if any. And try to make an estimation that way.
Thank you.
Just some clarification with that. So are you telling us now that? All this, this amount that we have in unpaid taxes is part of our fund balance?
Well, yeah, because it was recognized as revenue in the year that the commitment was made, so whenever it became payable to you, it's recognized as revenue. It's not about when the cash was received, it's about when the revenue was owed to you. So over the years, that's all been sort of like rolled up in your fund balance, but if you were going to write something off. Then you would have to, it would decrease your fund balance because the revenue is already wrapped up in there.
So our fund balance really isn't as big as we think it is.
Um, I I wouldn't say that. I, I mean, I don't. I haven't done an analysis of your taxes to see like, you know, what you really think is. Uncollectible, but I think the majority of the receivables are from the, a recent year. I'd have to look at your tax. Tax receivable report. Which I can do and get back to you. Um. Yeah.
Here, go look here, Chairman. On page sixteen, you're showing the other side fund balance of eight eighty seven. Around the number up. That a combination of the of the highway fund and general fund?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we have our policy or one that you recommend is sixteen to twenty percent. To be reserved for, you know, purposes of, if we have an issue that comes up. Are we within that? Or I think we were below that according to what? We're in the thirteen percent and we're supposed to be between sixteen and twenty.
Of of your total operating budget, is that what?
Right.
Yeah. Well, let me see. You can look at your total operating budget. I don't have that calculation offhand. Just for your general and highway, correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay, so it looks like.
There's a note about it.
Yeah, I think there's a note disclosure.
Yeah, that's one of the note I'm referring to, so we're we're probably a little under. I know we use some of the fund balances to reduce our taxes this year.
Yeah, it was a hundred and fifty. That's what's assigned. Yeah.
Oh. I just curious to, you know, of course, this year probably we'll have a larger surplus so we can build a backup, but I just wanted to.
Yeah. Yep.
Yes, Brittany, the other question I had is I know we're still waiting for a large amount of federal monies from the July storm. So because those are FEMA reimbursement funds. And at this point, I don't believe any of that's reflected in here as either a receivable or because we've already spent the money.
Yeah.
At some point, that will also be some additional relief. That'll be coming forward as we as we receive some of those monies coming through the budget of twenty two year.
Yeah, they're not booked as a general receivable, definitely. And then I was just going to look at your, you have some grants receivable. But that's. Not related to FEMA, that's another item.
FEMA money is basically money we've already spent.
Right.
And will not be necessarily assigned, it will be available.
Yeah.
You'd be able to restore your fund balance, probably also have potentially a little bit more if you had other priorities that you wanted to match grant or other types of. You know, whatever other opportunities the board would consider, so.
Yeah, we can look at that, Scott. I haven't, I don't remember seeing a like a FEMA application.
Well, we're still working with them on the project work sheets.
Okay.
Hey, that's, it's such a long process with them, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Getting the main project worksheets back and it's going to be roughly around six hundred and sixty thousand, so.
Oh, wow, yeah, that's a lot.
That'll, that'll change our position.
Um, also, just so for your tax and receivable, I just pulled up your report. And including the interest and penalties. About two hundred and ninety thousand dollars of that is is from twenty one. So just the fiscal year that just ended, and then another hundred and thirty thousand of that is related to F Y twenty. So well, you know, well over half or three quarters of that is related to the past two fiscal years. And then you have, you know. Um, and then you have, you know, you are carrying back to two thousand eleven, but that it's like sixteen hundred dollars for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, so. It's definitely definitely something that you want to look at.
Yeah, our tax sale policy uh dictates that it's gonna be two years out, so.
Yeah.
It's still out there that not collected, we still have one more payment period for the taxes, so.
Yep.
At that point, we will see where we end up and what's still outstanding.
Yeah.
Some of the red stuff are also red.
Some of the older ones, we usually generally do, so that comes to the stage.
I think maybe before we do that, I'd see if Brittany could make a recommendation, if we bring it to the board and the board could decide if they want to act on it.
That'd be great.
So if they have another set of eyes to take a look at it.
Yeah, yeah, happy to connect with you about that.
That'd be great.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? Well, thank you very much for your report, it's uh pretty informative and I guess we move forward from here.
Yeah, thank you, we'll talk with you soon. Have a good night.
Okay, let's move on to item six, the downtown transportation fund application resolution. Uh, like a motion to approve that and authorize the select board to sign.
So moved.
Motion been made second to to uh prove the downtown transportation fund application resolution, although somebody would say aye.
Aye.
Although the votes may, is it here, you have it? Hey, review the agenda items for the next meeting, March fifteenth. Wow, I have Wyndham County Trails Alliance wants to confirm that there's some data on where they stand.
Okay.
Um, financials, I assume, will be on there.
Yes.
Now, there is a notice from the declaration of inclusion. I think that was, uh, that's gonna be for the uh joint board, I think.
Yeah, that was the one I just forwarded to you.
Did you get that thing about the Heritage Trails thing, they want some sort of letter or something, is that for?
I would say we'll put that up in the next one.
Okay, put that up in the meeting, okay. Anyone else?
The uh format of the town meeting is a tiny other, when when do we like to discuss that? Obviously a year away, but there's a lot of energy around, there's a lot, I have a lot of comments and constituents about how Westminster does it on Saturday, et cetera, et cetera, um, maybe we want to tackle that.
Well, we need to think about it, I I was gonna get a hold, I don't know if maybe Scott can just find out if we decide to do a special meeting to vote on that uh strand ballot issue. How far out we have to, you know, or how close can we vote that? If the vote is taken, whether it's a four vote, how soon can we do that to make it effective in twenty twenty three, which evidently the vote tonight was was uh pretty affirmative, everybody seems to be leading toward a strong ballot, even with the issues that you can't adjust, I think it's either up or down, so.
We could certainly put it on for discussion, you want me to put it on?
Yeah, we can put it on for discussion, so I I I don't see anything really that's on the next week, next agenda.
No.
But I I do know that we need to press to make sure that we get, uh, we got a lot of comments, at least I did, about um, the budget comparison figures not being in there. I know we put in like five years of like twenty twenty one, twenty two uh in there, now we have the budget figures and there are no figures to go from, even though they're a year old, and I I make that point last night. So, need to see if we can get those numbers audited sooner, I know we started them earlier, but is that was the fact that they couldn't get them to us because they weren't?
Well, because you had to go back and get the statements of twenty twenty, that's what really delayed it.
Okay.
That's that's why this wasn't done.
Okay. Well, I think with that, that endeavor to go ahead with that, um. But I'll get a hold of Will Sennick and see if there's some deadline that we have to do, so that if the do do hope, that's if we should get to the group's meeting to do it in April, once it settles from the elections here, uh, then see if we can do it in April and if that'll fall by, it's to get it. If you did your vote to do it, it's a year beyond, so that's why I suggest that the earlier the better, for us, I don't want to rush right into it, because, you know. So.
I mean, thanks for your research last night in that issue, it's complicated.
Yeah.
Well, as as I said, the state didn't help as much, so and as Ray mentioned, you can ask ten lawyers for an opinion, you're gonna get ten different answers, so. I just figured I'd go to the to the head and chat and see if they give us a thick, you know, from clarifying uh language and
It's good, good you did your homework because, oh, you know.
Yeah, so I mean, and I think there was a comment on Zoom last night that someone would have challenged the some woman, I think, was speaking at the time. Uh, yeah, which Proctor was uh was making his appeal.
Yeah.
Uh, I think someone said, you know, uh, or maybe during the discussion of the ballot issue itself, that some woman said, I, well, I could I could challenge, I don't know if that was.
Maybe in court.
Yeah. So, and and good and also directed so we could do a special meeting to get it done, so. To manage the board and we'll find out by next to fifteen, they'll find out from sending this uh, there's a time period that we have to. The warning would have to be ten days prior to a meeting, but uh, but that's that's.
They might have to certify the election, so you might have to wait.
Well, that's the point, yeah, so I just want to find out.
I think there is a time in case somebody wants to challenge.
So if you take up the other.
You might have thirty days to wait, I don't know.
You know, how we want to see the format of the thing, I mean, me having five years of budgets in there makes no sense to me, I I think it would be better if we had a couple of years in there than the proposed budget. But have it in there so that we have some audit numbers so people can see the budget, what was expended, so they can uh, that's why we prefer them to use the uh audit report, because six to nine, seventy, seventy one, that's Brittany just said. It gives you the breakdown, so they can look at that and see where they are, and those audit and numbers, so.
And the other idea I can't last night was having information meeting far enough in advance and discuss and have public debate about what what goes into, you know.
Well, you know, there's there's pro and con to that situation because we're elected to develop the budget along with the manager. So if you're gonna have a a a meeting that people are gonna say, well, why don't we just, why don't we put this in there, why don't we put that?
Right.
Why are we elected to do our job?
Right, but the old town meeting format, weren't they able from the floor to say, I want?
You can amend something, but with a steering ballot, you can't, that's that's the difference, and there, you know, there, well, like I say, there's three hundred and some odd votes that said off steering ballot versus under thirty, but it all depends on who shows up for the floor vote, so it has to be would have to advertise it, get the word out that you want a vote for, get you get yourselves in here because it's gotta be from the floor, and it just saw last night. What, we have maybe fifty or sixty people in here?
Yeah, probably fifty in here and another fifty, fifty five on Zoom at various points.
So, you know.
But the Zoom people can't vote.
No, that's right.
But I mean, they maybe if it was a tour, they might have come in, so maybe we would have had a hundred and twenty years.
I mean, I can see having, like Westminster, they have, there's a week ahead, they'll say, and they vote a solid week. So I can see a week ahead, I mean, to discuss the articles, then if anybody else has any questions, then they can, you know, that have it ready for discussion, that your information meeting, or your information meeting would be that week, week ahead.
Didn't think that Saturday was a better idea, Rick, is that what people were saying?
Yeah, I mean, at least in Westminster, it it uh, you know, people who are working people, people who can't stay up till ten o'clock at night, um, so you get a better, better participation.
Yeah, I I think it's especially now that that we have a fact TV and the kind of coverage we have. It'd be really good to have it at least a week ahead because then someone that that wasn't here at ten thirty last night could could watch it at least and be informed, you know? Be informed, uh, you know, I I was watching some of the this evening, like before I came in.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, I mean, if we're gonna use this technology, we're gonna use it intelligently as we can, you know, and it's effective.
That's it. Okay. All right, review agenda items from the joint board meeting, which was the end of this month. Uh, I would say the declaration of inclusion, that's got to do with minorities and including them in your policies, et cetera, et cetera, if you can find that on the P S and T website, it's all on there, it's like, like, that word of inclusion, there's there's all four by page articles in there. And Debbie brought it up, uh, who's the one that started the conversation, I think she and Bill Scott and I would see seen on it, so.
Is it a policy thing that we vote on?
You can, you can, you can make a resolution that you're gonna apply to, you know, declaration of inclusion to to apply to all your policy rather than.
It's a little broader than your non discriminatory and E O C types of designation, but it's a little broader than that.
More than hiring.
It's a lot, yeah, so.
That doesn't mean we would have to change each and every policy and add that whole thing.
I don't believe so, I I have to look into it, I just literally got it, so I didn't have much time.
So we've moved, you know, into twenty nine to the mark, so we're we're.
We're gonna talk about that meeting, sure, it was the first discussion of ARPA and projects, and then we'll get an update on the tax sale.
Yeah, we're reviewing approval of the bills and warrants, uh, there aren't a lot to do, so we can skip that, and other business, Rick?
Nothing.
Fun? Budget, nothing, I guess everyone wants to go home.
I love that we adjourned.
There's no executive session needed, so I'll take a motion to adjourn, motion has been made, wait a second. Motion's made second to adjourn, all those people say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're out of here.
So, um, did you guys pass it on and sign the sheet with Rick?
Record.